Let everyone have an opportunity to be seated. For those members on the commission, please don't forget your little red light. If you're talking, please push the button. I believe we're just about seated here. Want to call to order the voting session March the twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And the invocation, please remain seated. Commissioner Gilbert will be providing the invocation today. Pledge of allegiance will be by Commissioner Mylan Blake. Then we'll stand for the pledge. Go ahead, sir.
I was led this morning as I sat in at home to pray. And I was like, Lord, what should I do? What I, what I need to say? And so he wants all of us to bow our heads. And just for a moment, think back on what you've done, what you've need to ask him for, and what you need to ask him to give you if you've done anything wrong. He said, a man that has a good mind, his prayers are heard. A woman that has a good mind, her prayers are heard. And I want y'all to just, just for a second, about thirty seconds, I want you to close your eyes. And I want you to enter into his presence. And as you enter into his presence, just speak to him and talk to him and ask him what he needs from you. Now, as we enter into this year, it doesn't start a year. And as we enter into it and keep on going, let's, let's keep him in front of us as we go. Let's keep God in front of us, keep moving forward. And I'd like to say the Lord's Prayer, and I want each one of us to say it. If you like to say it, say it. If you don't, that's fine, too. But this is where he's led us. And if y'all will join with me, our Father, who art in heaven, thou be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, the glory forever. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Very well done on both counts. I got this right here in front of me. It doesn't come around, as the coach said, very often, but it's been around twice in the last three or four years. So we're, we're thrilled to have it. And we welcome all the people from the basketball team. You'll be introduced here shortly. Roll call, please.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins, Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters, Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Twelve present and two absent.
I'd like, like to have a motion for the approval of the minutes, please. Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Gilbert, I mean, not Commissioner Alfred. Discussion, call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you. Report from the county mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Well, as you can see, we've got some very special guests with us today. We're fortunate to have Coach Ruder and his staff and the two thousand twenty-three state champion Bradley High School Bearats. Welcome to Bradley County's commission today. I want to quickly read a proclamation in honor of them, and then we'll get a photo here in front of the commission, and they'll be on their way back to class. They're looking forward to getting back, they said. Okay. Whereas the Bradley Central High School Bearats basketball team has been a storied program locally and across the state of Tennessee. Whereas the twenty-two, twenty-three Bearats have continued that tradition of success. Whereas the Bearats traveled this season to compete in and win the Carolina Invitational. And whereas the Bearats competed and won the title of district champions for the thirteenth time in a row. Whereas the Bearats competed and won the title of regional champions for the eighth time in a row. And whereas the Bearats competed and won the title of T double S double A state champions for the seventh time in the program's history, and the second time in the last five years, completing their season with a winning record of thirty-five and one. Now therefore, I D Gary Davis, Bradley County Mayor, do hereby proclaim today, Monday, March the twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, as Bradley Bearats Day throughout Bradley County. Ladies and gentlemen, your state champions, Bradley High School Bearats. Let's give them a big end. And if you could, come up front so we can get a photo of the proclamation. And then Coach Ruder, if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to.
All right. Welcome. Welcome.
You guys slide in over there.
You need this trophy, you're welcome to.
Thank you, girls.
Good job.
Great job.
I was thinking about him, and I couldn't even see over his head. That's why I was like, you better just a little bit.
Well, thank you, sir. Guys, I appreciate you having us here today. It's quite an honor to be coaching the girls' program at Bradley Central. You know, I was just, I was raised to give credit to people that came before me. So you well know Jim Smitty started this, this animal that we call Bearat basketball. So never would, well, I've lived long enough to beat Jim Smitty's records of twelve hundred wins. But there's a lot of people who paved the path for us, and the tradition keeps going on. You can be in Memphis, or you can be in Bristol, Tennessee, and you mentioned Bradley Central. And first thing comes out of their mouth a lot of times is Bearat basketball. So I'm very humbled to be part of that. But these girls, they deserve all the credit. I get them there on time. I keep them in shape, but they get every rebound and score every point. So I'm gonna give it to those of my girls. Appreciate you guys. Same time next year, what do you think?
That's what I was about to say, Coach. We'll, we'll have you down on the program about the same time next year. Let's look forward to it. Again, congratulations, ladies.
They've done a good job, you know that? Had a great season.
Sorry for a little bit of interruption there, but I think it's worth it. And hopefully, we will be back with them next year. You know, we discussed things like pointing out the most valuable player of the state of Tennessee was in that group. But they're dead set on it's about the team, so we didn't want to do that. But we had some very big stars there that we could have talked about for a long time. But they play as a team, and the most valuable player, if I'm not mistaken, is a freshman. So we may be back next year, and next year, and next year. That could be good. Okay, moving on, I do have several things for you, and I'll try to move fast. You have in front of you a resolution. I brought to you last week the results of the bidding process at the Justice Center. We have bid HVAC units. If you recall, we replaced several units two years ago, and we have bid another thirty units. And you have a resolution in front of you that's awarding the lowest and best bid to W.J. O'Neill Company for these HVAC units. I would appreciate a motion to approve this resolution.
Do I have a motion? Commissioner Thompson, do I have a second? Commissioner Rogers, open for discussion. Be in no discussion, call the roll.
Question?
Yes, please.
Is this a local company?
Where's W.J. O'Neill out of? Anybody can tell me offhand.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chattanooga is the closest. W.J. O'Neill, and the lowest bid was four hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for thirty HVAC units.
Any other comments? Yes.
Real quick, Mayor, it's my understanding that this is the first time that these units have been replaced since the building was first enacted.
Yes. Yeah, we started replacing some, but this is to hopefully complete it. But yeah, since the building was built.
The ones that we, that came originally when the building was built are the ones being replaced. Just give you a timeframe on that.
Twenty years. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Collins. Yes.
Twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you. The other resolution you also have in front of you, as I explained last week, in bidding the roof. If you recall, we've done one section, one phase, I guess you would say, of the roof. And this is, which got the courts and so forth. But this is to finish out the roof section. It's six hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars, and that bid going to Harris United Roof and Sheet Metal.
Do I have anyone to make a motion? Commissioner Rogers made the motion second, but Commissioner Thompson, open for discussion. Yes, Commissioner.
Is this a local company?
No, I think their closest office is Chattanooga also.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Collins. Yes.
Twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. That will, we can get it PO and get the contract in place so they can start those two projects going. And both of those projects are budgeted. I guess I'll have to do an amendment and put it in this year's budget. They're down to be budgeted July the first. But anyway, they're being paid out of ARP funds, so. All right, the other one I did not discuss last week. I think it's non-controversial, and Crystal's here to tell you more if you have more detailed questions. But we have another phase of opioid money settlement that is in the process of being settled from the opioid litigation. And this information packet basically authorizes me to sign any and all documents to move forward with that litigation settlement of opioid money. I don't think it mentions an amount, don't think we know that yet. But it is money in addition to what we've already received that is set aside, by the way, until the proper time. But this just authorizes me to move forward with the litigation.
Commissioner Hughes made a motion second. Commissioner Slater, open for discussion. Be in no discussion, call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And when we know an amount on that, I'll be bringing that back to you. Your septic repair program update. One hundred forty-six properties are in the process, six sewer hookups, forty-four permits have been issued, thirty-seven contracts have been signed with construction in the works, and eight projects have been completed. Fifty percent of the funds have been allocated. And to the public, these are first come, first served, but that program is moving along fine. The other thing, you have delivered the flash drive to Lori, I assume, Adam. Lori has your budget request, but this infamous, where is Bill Winters when you need him? Bill Winters made fun of my book several years ago, so that's why he gets the flash drive. And everybody else, if you want a book, you tell Lori she'll get one printed for you. I haven't had time to study it, just looking at totals. It's kind of misleading, but just to give you an idea, you know, I thought we had everybody in agreement that salary increases were gonna be number one this year, but I don't think so. This year's budget's forty-three million. Next year's requests are forty-seven million. And we could talk all day about this. A lot of elected officials, a lot of the people on the streets think that money's flowing out there because the state talks about having all this money, right? The state is on a sales tax budget. Sales tax is doing well with Biden's economy, with Biden's inflation. As things go up, sales tax goes up. The state's doing great, but we're not on a sales tax budget. We're on a property tax budget. And if you recall, Mylan's report to you last week, was it? We're in the year of the ratio study, which is gonna wipe out the other misnomer that, well, houses are selling for four hundred thousand dollars that were only worth three hundred thousand. Boy, we ought to be raking in the money. No, the ratio study's gonna wipe all that out. So the bottom line is, we're back to like every other year. You got two things. You can bring the lazy guy in who says, let's raise taxes, whatever sense that is, and balance this budget. Or you can have somebody that'll work his butt off for the next two months balancing it for you, and then getting criticized for everything he does. Some of this is misleading. There are some things in there, there's some grants in here. For example, say there's a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. That's gonna show up as an expense. But there's also offsetting revenues. So it's not truly a four million dollar increase when you take all those things into consideration. The first thing I'll do is I'll go through and wipe out those grants that have offsetting revenues. And that'll make the picture look a little bit better. But at the end of the day, forty-seven, maybe it's just forty-six million dollars as opposed to forty-three, that's three million dollars in growth. And the ratio study does seventy percent like they're telling Mylan it's gonna do. Somebody's got a lot of work to do. And that's before you even talk about raises. What I've always done, and I plan on doing it again, twenty-two so far, and I'm shooting for twenty-three, I'll get it balanced so you can put raises in there. But right now, there's three million dollars being requested, four million, roughly three to four million dollars being requested without raises. If a penny's worth three hundred thousand, how many pennies does that take to balance it the lazy way? So I'm telling you, folks, it's not like state budget. They're flowing in money in Nashville. But I have sat right here when state was balancing their budgets on our backs because sales tax wasn't doing so well. That goes up and down, up and down. Right now, they're up, and they're flying high, and everybody thinks that's the way we all are. That's not how property taxes are. And with the, the study that they're gonna do, the seventy percent ratio study is gonna neutralize all of the growth that many of us think we're having. So I'm just setting the stage for you, folks. It's gonna be like every other year. There's gonna have to be some tough, tough decisions made in cuts. Are those same people that are playing, paying Biden inflationary prices on the street? You wanna give them a tax increase to go along with it? I don't think so. At least it won't be in my proposal. So we've got a lot of work cut out for us, as we always do, but we'll get there. But that's basically what this book is telling you. Forty-seven million requested, four million dollar increase. And we will not have four million dollar increase in revenue, I promise you. So we'll get to work on it, and we'll be reporting back as we make progress. And come that first Monday in June, we'll have a balanced budget that you'll have the opportunity to change, however you see fit. But the good thing is, you get to start out before you make your changes with a balanced budget, which is not what's in this red book. This is a red book, but it's not the hemlock, I guarantee you. Any questions about any of that? If not, I look forward to the next few weeks of working with you. But just please understand, tough, tough on revenues. It's easy to make expense requests, but you can't fund a request without the revenue being there because at the end of the day, it's gotta be balanced. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. We need to remember ninety-five counties in the state of Tennessee. Bradley County is either, either ninety or ninety-one on the lowest tax property tax rate in the state of Tennessee. So we've got a lot to be proud of, and we should remember that. Next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Mason, second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Collins. Yes.
Twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you very much. The next item is, are the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start with Commissioner Rogers on the left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report today.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few items. Scotty Weed, I went by in Bates-Pike and Durkey, that is fixed. He put that back together, he did not take it, the guardrail there. And second item, of course, I want to thank Tom Collins and his crew. They worked quickly and get that done. It looked real nice. Went to Joe Blackburn's funeral, he was one of our EMS guys. It's great to see that we still honor our first responders, our workers of Bradley County. I will say this, my mom used to say one thing to me as a child when my grandparent would die, or a friend would die, or someone would pass away. She'd always say this, and Scotty, I think you'll like this. To be absent from this body is to be present with the Lord. My third item, Lori, if I may, I would like to put Dewayne Blue from the American Cancer Society on the agenda for March the twenty-seventh. He wants to give us a presentation on the, what I call Relay for Life. And fourth item, Adam, if you will, I would like to get an update on the broadband. I have a concerned citizen in the sixth district, just on our status of the sixth district when we filed, and it was denied our application. And then just from there, just a brief.
The, the areas in the southern part of the county, the sixth district have been, we've applied twice already with the state. The most recent time was last summer when we applied for four areas in Bradley County. The White Oak Valley Road area, I'm sorry, yes, White Oak Valley, and also Chautauqua Valley Road area are the two of the four that were approved. We're never quite sure, we've never been given an answer why the areas in the sixth district aren't approved. Of course, these are competitive grants, so we're competing with all ninety-five counties. And so at some point, they look at where the need is the greatest, and they, they use the maps that we're familiar with at the FCC level and the state broadband maps. So we are hopeful that they will open up a window this year. We've not been told when yet, but the state would open up a grant cycle for this year. It's already a little bit later than when they opened the grant cycle last year. If you'll remember, we found out in August that we were approved for the two areas. But this will be the third time. And of course, the commission has also already set aside a portion of the ARP bucket for broadband to meet that ten percent match when we're able to apply. So we're hopeful that we're able to do that this year. Again, it'll be the third time we've applied for that area, and we're hopeful that the third time is, is the charm. There have been some questions about the maps for those areas, and even the areas that have been approved. Why, why certain neighborhoods appear to be carved out? And the explanation for that really goes back to the mapping. We, for instance, the Chautauqua Valley area, there are two neighborhoods very close to the golf course out there that if you look at the map, for all intents and purposes, appeared to have been carved out of the map. And that is the case. What happens is that if you go look at the map, those areas are served according to the FCC map, served by either Spectrum or AT&amp;T. What we know in reality, though, is that the homes in Flagstone, for instance, are not served. You cannot hook up to Spectrum Internet, however, the map says they're served. What happens is these large companies will, will offer to hook up to somebody on the street for twenty thousand dollars or sixteen thousand dollars. Last week, we got a call where the lady was offered thirty thousand dollars, and she could hook up to broadband internet. Well, obviously, the resident doesn't take them up on that offer. But by simply offering and extending an offer to a resident on the street, they're allowed to then go back and report that that area is served. So in reality, there's not fiber run into that neighborhood. Nobody can hook up even if they wanted to, unless they wanted to pay that, that large fee. But then why VEC doesn't service it is because if we were to apply for that area showing served, it could bump us out of the grant. Okay, so those areas that are served on the map, we're not applying for. These are for underserved or not served areas. And that's where they've even tightened the areas in the sixth district to try to, to get into what, what are the areas of greatest need down there? And, and hopefully up our chances of seeing those areas down in the southern part of the county be approved this time. But at this point, we don't have a timeline of when we can apply. We, we hope that at some point this calendar year, we'll be able to do that.
Thank you, Adam. I hope that satisfies my person in the sixth.
It's not for lack of trying. The county's tried twice and has, has put money on the table to, to try to make those projects a reality.
All we can do is, is try, and, but anyway. And yesterday, I would turn sixty years old, so happy birthday to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. You're a, you're a spring chicken, man. Commissioner Mason.
Everything's well in the sixth, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Goins is absent. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, Chairman. Mr. Mayor, I just hate to hear that, that four in the hole. I hope we come out with a balanced budget. And maybe you could write the White House, and we get, get some of that money going to Ukraine. We can get that in here. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert.
There's a couple folks out in the fourth district that's needing some, some of the neighbors beside them got some pretty heavy trash that's blowing over in their yard and stuff, and I'll be getting with Tim on that. And everything else looks pretty good.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Winters is absent. Commissioner Collins.
All is well on the third, I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, real quick. Senator Blackburn was in town the other day. I had a chance to ask her the question I've been asking all of our federal officials, and that is the art money and the extension. And the consensus is basically that Congress is really not going to do anything with respect to that deadline. So that lets us know that we need to stay focused. We already have, we've already kind of agreed until they change that we would stay focused. But a bit of a more confirmation, if you will, that there's not gonna be any extensions due to that. Remember, the number is, we gotta have everything appropriated. Remember, the, the number is we got to have everything appropriated by twenty-four, and the project has to be done by twenty-twenty-six. So these broadband projects, these water projects, and especially the ones that we're partnered with, with the state, uh, we just need to stay on top of it. But who knows? Second, on the, uh, broadband, Mr. Ledford, I'll remind you, way before COVID, the state was already doing grants. And we had already put money in the budget to, not near as much as, as we were. And then COVID happened, and then all this money came down. Um, so even though if the grants are awarded or not granted, I'll just speak for myself. I'm committed to going after state grant money even after all of the COVID money is run out until all of Bradley County has broadband or at least access to it, as Adam just said. Not everybody has even access to it, and I think it's ungodly that the ISP, the net service provider, would ask a resident to pay upfront five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars for a router or the equipment to go out on the street that they should be doing because it's an investment on theirs. I mean, they're going to charge those people a monthly rate, aren't they? So, um, anyway, that gets on the bandwagon, but I did want to let you know that we, we were going after grants way before COVID, and I hope it will continue to go after grants afterwards. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Alford.
Yes, just a couple of things. Uh, the Audit Committee will meet here in the Commission Room at one o'clock on March twenty-nine. Second, uh, we had a meeting the other day, uh, the Law Enforcement Committee meeting was, uh, held, and, uh, Sheriff Lawson had, uh, his people here went over a couple of grants. Violent Crime Intervention Fund Formula Grant and the Tennessee Department of Health, ELC Confinement Facility Grant. These are two grants that are, we're waiting on the car, and we didn't do anything about them, didn't vote on anything because the, the contracts are yet to come in. So that'd be something that'll be coming back to us later. Also, he went through jail accreditation. Uh, I think it was one of only five or six jails in the state that had this jail accreditation this year, so. Was very good report from the Sheriff's Department. Other than that, second district's doing well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Sorry, can I add one thing to that?
Yes, please.
That accreditation is very important from the point that it gives an extra three dollars per inmate per day on that. So that, all that work that he did, uh, congratulate on it. It does result in some revenue on our side with respect to the inmate. One, three dollars a day, per inmate per day. Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing today.
Commissioner Beatty.
Oh, I have nothing either. Everything looks pretty good.
First district. That's great. No one, is there any unfinished business? I'm not aware of any approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion, Commissioner Thompson? Do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes, open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake? Collins?
Yes.
Twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you very much. Uh, Agenda Item A, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution appropriating the eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the four fifty-two Pleasant Grove Lane Water Project in Bradley County to Cleveland Utilities as allowed by the conditions of the term of American Rescue Plan Act from the funds allocated by Resolution twenty-two-one dash fifty, uh, amended and on twenty-two seventy-five, and authorizing Bradley County Mayor to execute an agreement with Cleveland Utilities regarding said appropriations. This can be seen on pages eight, forty-eight and forty-nine. I put that in the form of resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Slater on the second. Any discussion, please? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
It's twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
On, uh, Agenda Item B, we'll go into a public hearing on the rezoning resolution for fifty-five twenty-seven Water Level Highway. I'm going to have Commissioner Hughes read what it's about, and then I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public that wants to speak for or against it. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from C-one Ru- Rural Commercial District to C-two General Commercial District property located at fifty-five twenty-seven Water Level Highway identified by tax map zero-five-nine M, Group A, Parcel zero-zero-seven. This can be seen on pages fifty, fifty-one. I put that in form of motion.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for the, the motion or against the property being rezoned? No one? Do I have a second on the motion? Commissioner Gilbert has the second on the motion. Open for discussion. Any discussion on it, please?
Is that property owner here?
Yes, the property owner's here.
What's the plans for the site to have it transferred over into the new rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, I may be able to answer it for you.
Go ahead, please.
This will open this up to like restaurants and different things of that area. So that's the reason for the rezon.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Hi.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake? Collins?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's eleven in favor, none opposed, one pass, and two absent.
We are closed. We now, we were open to the public, and we are now closed on that. Uh, Agenda Item C is Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution approving a payment in lieu of taxes, schedule and delegate authority to the interim to a pilot agreement. Um, you have the resolution on page fifty-two and fifty-three in your packet. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, there's one part, actually two parts, that I'd like to, uh, point out here. Because there's been a few questions, and I'd just like to point out, not to read everything, but on paragraph two where you see, whereas the project's anticipated to result in a creation of five hundred and twenty-four full-time positions. Key word, creation, right there. Five hundred and twenty-four full-time positions with an annual starting wage of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. I think that's good to note on there and also, uh, go down one paragraph or, uh, two paragraphs. Whereas, the board has determined that notwithstanding the pilot agreement, the project will result in a payment of lieu and taxes to Bradley County, Tennessee in an estimate of one million, seventy-two thousand, fifty dollars and ninety cents over the same ten-year period. I think that's important to note. Why we do these pilots, excuse me, um, as the mayor was talking about. When it comes to growth, and there's all, we talked about this in finance the other day. You have all types and flavors, if you will. Um, remember, these pilots agreements, even though they may look very attractive and like we're quote-unquote giving away the house, so to speak, they're a very good thing because eventually you're, they're going to be paying the full amount, and the job creation and stuff like that is what helps us later with our property tax and our revenue in order to meet these budget demands. So this is a very good thing. Um, it may take time. I appreciate the work that, uh, Doug and the IDB Board has done over the last years. These things take years to do, but, um, this investment that we do right now will pay off for this commission and future commissions. Just want to point that out, Mr. Chairman. With that, I make the, uh, resolution in form of motion.
Second.
Do I have a, Commissioner Rogers on the second, open for discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
It's twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item, communication from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Three weeks, three weeks in a row. Yes, come on up, sir.
I won't take much of your time, but, uh, this one is, uh, Commissioner Beatty has asked me before the meeting, uh, about a building project that's underway off Exit Twenty, and I did just want to let all of you know that, um, we have a hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse and distribution facility under construction. It's just outside the Spring Branch Industrial Park on the privately held properties. Uh, that building will be, uh, an operational site for Empire Distributors, who is a regional liquor wholesaler. So, uh, that's under construction. Uh, we did not offer any incentives to that project. We felt as though it needed the spot and it was a good location for them. Um, that will create, uh, result in about seventy to ninety shifts of positions within the greater Chattanooga area. So, uh, we're not certain there are any net new jobs from that at this point in time, but as time goes on, that could result in job opportunities for Bradley County. I also like to point out that since August first, uh, we have been privileged as a community. We have announced over five hundred and fifty million dollars of new capital investment that will ultimately be on the tax rolls for this community. And that will result in fifteen to seventeen hundred jobs over the next seven. Thought we should end on a good note.
Thank you very much. I'd like for everyone to note our new time clock over here on the big screen. We'll allow, when it goes over, we'll allow that to happen. Uh, announcements, uh, Audit Committee meets on March the twenty-ninth. Work, the work session is on March the twenty-seventh at seven PM. Upcoming events, Main Street, Cleveland, March the twenty-seventh at noon, Elks Lodge. We are adjourned.